This is the session on culture, sports and tourism. And let me welcome Secretary for Culture, Sports and Tourism, Ms. Resanna Law and her team to our meeting. Members, if you want to speak, please press the request to speak button now. I will give the floor to the secretary to say a few words. Thank you, Chairman. I will briefly introduce key tasks under Culture, Sports and Tourism Bureau's portfolios in the current financial year. Tourism. The recent Hong Kong Super March was kicked off by the opening of the Kai-Tech Sports Park. A series of spectacular events such as the Live Golf, Art Basel, Hong Kong Sevens and Coldplay, Music of the Sphere's World Tour, were held one after another with a large number of participating visitors and dynamic vibes in the city, thereby bringing real benefits to the economy. We will continue to deepen international cooperation and exchanges at full steam through culture, sports and tourism. Between the end of March and April, guests from various countries and cities will converge in Hong Kong for international events, including the Museum Summit 2025 in the end of March, the World Tourism Cities Federation Hong Kong Fragrant Hills Tourism Summits to be held next week, followed by the Asia Cultural Cooperation Forum plus 2025. This year, the government will allocate 1.235 billion dollars to Hong Kong Tourism Board to implement measures under the Hong Kong Tourism Development Blueprint 2.0 and pursue the concept of tourism is everywhere. Efforts include strengthening mainland and overseas publicity and promotion, exploring emerging markets such as the Middle East and ASEAN, enhancing efforts to attract MICE, that is meetings, incentives, conferences and exhibitions and cruise visitors, so as to bring more high-value-added overnight visitors to Hong Kong and make them indulge in pleasure while staying in Hong Kong, remembering about Hong Kong afterwards and come back time again. We expect to welcome forty-nine million visitors to Hong Kong this year at some ten percent of year-on-year growth. We'll continue to promote cultural exchange and support mega arts and cultural events we host in Hong Kong through different policy measures to consolidate Hong Kong's position as an east-west center for international cultural exchange. The government has allocated funding to support the second edition of the Hong Kong Performing Arts Expo, establishing the event into a flagship of Hong Kong's arts and culture industries, thereby opening up trade markets for performing arts. We'll also continue to attract and support international and large-scale arts and cultural events we held in Hong Kong through the Mega Arts and Cultural Events Fund. We've enhanced the operation of the fund with a new application taking effect on the first of January 2025, with a view to better and more effectively promoting the development of arts and culture as well as boosting tourism and the economy. Creative industries. We'll continue to support the development of the film industry, including financial support to the industry under the Film Development Fund to produce films that promote Chinese culture and to showcase the fine traditional Chinese culture to the audience. The Create Smart Initiative has provided funding support to more than seven hundred and eighty projects with about 3.4 billion Hong Kong dollars committed to promote the development of seven creative industries. We'll continue to provide funding support for and incubate more cultural and creative projects with potential for industrialization through CSI. We'll also support creative and cultural sectors to create more cultural IP products that integrate Hong Kong characteristics to foster the Hong Kong brand and enhance our communication and sales value of cultural products so as to tell good stories of Hong Kong. Sports. The government has been supporting the staging of international sports events through the airmark system. We expect to support about twenty major events this year. We will continue to support the airmark scheme through the Arts and Sports Development Fund and adopt a more strategic approach to attract sports events that can bring significant economic benefits to Hong Kong. Upon this official commissioning on the first of March, the Kai-Tech Sports Park is gradually taking shape as a state-of-the-art venue in Hong Kong in a new hub for hosting major sports and entertainment events. It will boost sports development and inject impetus into related industries such as recreation, entertainment, tourism and mega event economy. In the coming summer, mega football events will come one after another in Hong Kong and large-scale concerts will also be held one after another. We will continue to monitor work and maintain close liaison with the operator and relevant stakeholders so as to realize the opportunities presented by this world-class infrastructure together and unleash the full power of Hong Kong as a center for major events. Fifteenth National Games. Guangdong, Hong Kong and Macau will co-host the Fifteenth National Games in November this year. The governments of Guangdong, Hong Kong and Macau are taking forward the preparatory work according to the principle of a simple, safe and wonderful, and the preparation has come to the final stretch. Moreover, formation of a Hong Kong SAR delegation and selection of athletes for participation respectively in competition events and mass participation events are underway. We'll leverage the opportunities and potential arising from the event to further promote sports development in Hong Kong and encourage active participation. A healthy population could empower Hong Kong to thrive and flourish. With these remarks, I welcome questions from the floor. Thank you. Twenty-two members have pressed a button and indicated their wish to speak. I have seventy-four minutes, we have seventy-four minutes left. We can allow for sixteen or seventeen members to speak. Let me read their names. Vincent Chang, Andrew Lam, Yaowen Kit, Kenneth Lang, So Chuanhui, Yan Man Yu, Tang Fei, Chow Su Chong, Yim Kong, Benson Look, Chow Su, Chan Su Hong, Chu Hua Kang, Stelling Yung, Yo Park Lo, Kenneth Fork and the sixteenth member to speak, Ma Feng Kwok. The seventeenth, Johnny Ng, probably no chance to speak, Maggie Chen and the other members to follow, please. If you still want to press ahead with your question, put them in writing. Mr. Vincent Chang will kick off. Two questions, one, seven, nine and three, four. Well, I thank the administration for the efforts. In fact, in Super March, we have been able to attract a lot of visitors. I was in the pub area in Shim Satcho East and the restaurants were seventy percent, eighty percent full. So the biggest question is about giving them the best experience. My question is on hiking trails. For the McLahost Trails, number one and two, in recent weeks, we've seen crowds of hikers and there are transport issues. Many visitors have to resort to illegal means of public transport and many visitors could not go to Sai Kung Center. My question is about enhancing tourist experience by improving the transport network, especially in Sai Kung. Can we do more about green transport? The second question is about the cruise terminal. I went to the terminal when the Hong Kong Sevens were being held. It was quite quiet. But now we see some opportunities. A few days ago, when we discussed home and youth affairs, we talked about the Youth Link and you also mentioned the blueprint for the development of the tourism industry 2.0. So on this note, can we work with the HYAB so as to stage something like the Arts Central Youth Version so that younger artists from different places around the world can come and gather there and create a better ambience? Secretary? Two questions. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the questions. On hiking trails, I'm fond of hiking as well. And I prefer natural trails that are accessible and easy. So let's say if you put more vehicles there, be it electric vehicles or other forms of green transport, it may undermine this experience of being connected with the nature. Now about this place you mentioned, indeed, vehicular access is allowed up to the East Dam. And in fact, the taxis, urban taxis or new territories taxis alike could access East Dam and then turn around. But despite this expeditious measure, it undermines the guest experience in nature. In fact, the Tourism Commission will be discussing with the Transport Department and the transport operators along with the AFCD so as to provide a solution to this transport problem. We need to strike a balance. We cannot just open up the area for cars. And in fact, we will go ahead with promoting hiking trails. Recently, I went to Tai O and in fact, it took me some two hours to reach Ye O through this hiking trail. And there are different options of public transport. We don't have to be to start, all start at the same place. As for the cruise terminal, I'm very happy to explore this option to create synergy. For example, we can have a gathering spot for young artists. It can become some sort of an incubator or an exhibition venue. In March this year, we had this event called Hong Kong Connect. Some three hundred local artists were able to showcase their work in this exhibition. So if they're interested in using the cruise terminal as the venue, we'll be happy to explore this option. Now about the landscape deck of the cruise terminal on the third floor, we will be inviting expression of interest to fully utilize the place. We also welcome views from members. Mr. Andrew Lam, I have two questions to follow up on, one, two, one and one, three, oh, three, one, oh, about island tourism. Sai Kung Hoy Art Festival is the pioneer in promoting island tourism. About the expenditure, it was, I mean, forty-seven million were recorded, covering some thirty thousand visitors. So that means we provide subsidy of up to two hundred dollars per person. Maybe I'm money-minded, but I'd like to ask about the rationale. Are we trying to attract more visitors? I understand that the secretary is also interested in promoting island tourism. So that's my question. The next question relates to museums. That's reply zero number three, one, oh. You have the lecture halls, activity rooms, theaters, et cetera in museums. And according to the reply, the utilization rate is about seventy percent. That's not bad, but I'd like to know exactly how you come by these figures and whether it's possible to further boost the usage rate, please? Two questions, Secretary. Sai Kung Hoy Arts Festival, that's the first question. As I understand, the member asked about the expenditure over the past few years and also the per capita spending. Well, Mr. Lam described a situation involving local visitors and inevitably, in the past few years, we were still in the midst of a pandemic. We had yet to resume normalcy. So the majority of participants had been locals. In the future, if we have another similar festival, we should be able to attract more inbound visitors. In fact, this festival has been well received and if it is to be hosted again, we will focus on attracting visitors. And of course, in terms of the dollar sign, we'd like to help attract more visitors to generate economic benefits. For tourist attractions or hotspots in Hong Kong, if we're able to bring in locals to these attractions, we'll be able to drive up the popularity of these spots. And then comes revenue. For overseas visitors, they may also wish to visit these popular spots or popular exhibitions. And by word of mouth, using social media platforms, for example, we can further promote the attractions. For question or reply number three, one, oh, I'll give the floor to my colleague to take the question about museums. About the lecture halls and activity rooms in museums managed by the LCSD, we arrive at these figures by looking at the available slots. Basically, our team in charge of museum looks at relevant activities. So in order to boost usage rates, we need to consider putting in place arrangements for different exhibitions to take place or different activities to take place along with our partners. CSTB two, three, six, two, three, seven. That, these are two questions from me and also another question from Ms. Judy Chan, two, six, nine, two, three, six, two, three, seven. I'd like to take a follow-up on these two questions. They relate to the development in Kai-Tech. Secretary gave me a reply. That's two, three, seven. I'm fully confident in her leadership when it comes to development of Kai-Tech. Now, when she answered Mr. Vincent Chang's question, she did say that she hopes to create synergy among the youth posts, Kai-Tech Cruise Terminal, et cetera. And then concessions can be offered during the low seasons. My suggestion is to, is for the government to come up with more packages. For example, there are events going on in Kai-Tech Sports Park, tickets are hard to come by and if we provide concessions to cruise terminal passengers, we may be able to increase usage rate. According to the reply, you'll consider drawing up itineraries for Kaolin East. And that's similar to my question in two, three, six. I'd like to develop religious and cultural attractions for tourists and apart from the, we have a number of temples, including one in Wang Tai Sin, et cetera. So I think there is potential. Another question is on two, six, nine. From twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four, the usage rate for Hong Kong Coliseum reached a hundred percent and for the Queen Elizabeth Stadium, ninety-five percent. So these two venues are really popular. They are premium facilities. And according to the secretary's reply with the commissioning of Kai-Tech Sports Park, there is room for us to hold more concerts at these two facilities. There are complaints about failed balloting. Now for those failed participants, can we give them priority in the next balloting exercise so that these artists will be able to perform in these facilities? And about ticket scalping, I understand that this is after a commercial operation. Tickets are sold by a commercial operator. But still, there should be a set of guidelines for venue hires so that a real name registration can be put in place.
So Xin. Secretary, two questions. On the usage rate of the Kai-Tech Cruise Terminal, we've said time and again that we are happy to consider different proposals to draw footfall to the cruise terminal. I'm not going to repeat my points here. There are different types of cruise passengers and cruises. For Hong Kong residents, of course, when they arrive in Hong Kong, they want to get home as soon as possible. As for other cruises that bring in foreign tourists, they may take part in banquets and different events held by the cruise companies. And all these events will help bring economic benefits to the city. As to whether they can be brought to, for example, the Kai-Tech Sports Park or to different religious institutions like our temples, well, I encourage members of the trade, including the cruise lines as well as our travel agencies to organize these tours. Now on the point about the Hong Kong Coliseum as well as the Queen Elizabeth Stadium, it's not about the drawing of time slots only. We look at whether the venue can be offered to the organizer depending on the nature of the events. Now with the commissioning of the Kai-Tech Sports Park, we have an additional venue in Hong Kong. As to the positioning of the Kai-Tech Sports Park as well as the Hong Kong Coliseum and the Queen Elizabeth Stadium, we're carrying out study on this now and we will announce the findings of the study in due course. On the sales of tickets, well, we will have to have a discussion with concert organizers about real name registration. If we implement real name registration without having a consensus with the organizers, it would not work. So we will have this discussion with the relevant organizers. Mr. Kenneth Lo. I'd like to follow up my own question, number one, seven, two. It's about the preparation work for the National Games. How can we make the National Games popular among citizens and how can we encourage the participant, the participation of the public? This is going to be a mega event in Hong Kong as well as in the Greater Bay Area. So I want to know about the publicity strategy. How are you going to promote the National Games to schools and to the community? These National Games are going to be held by three different places. How are the three places going to coordinate with each other? Will there be discounts offered to attract people to come? Now, on the arrangement of volunteers, two thousand people aged fifteen to seventeen, they will work as volunteers to help promote the National Games. Will they be given the opportunities to participate in training as well as exchanges? Three questions, Secretary. On the National Games, together with the Macau SAR as well as the Guangdong Province, under the instruction of our country, we are co-hosting the National Games together. So we've been in talks with each other about the matters mentioned by Mr. Lo and the test events have been going well. Between April and June, we will hold more test events such as basketball games as well as beach volleyball games. Now on promoting the National Games, can we offer tourism products like multidestination products? Well, there are several things that we can do. First, we will think about how to broadcast the event. For example, we can do live broadcasting. We'll talk about this with the Guangdong Province. We will definitely come up with a good proposal that can take care of all audiences in the three places. We have quite a number of media that are interested in reporting about the National Games. They include media from Hong Kong as well as from the mainland. We have proposed two areas that are worth reporting. For example, there are certain events that are of the interests of people in Hong Kong. There are certain more eye-catching events. And by broadcasting these games, we can increase the interest of people about a sport. Also, we can come up with characteristic tourism products as we promote or hold the games. And this have to be in line with our ticketing arrangement. We can't disclose the relevant details yet because we have to talk to the travel agencies first about what kind of multidestination products we can roll out. For example, we have to first come up with a list of events that can draw people's attention. On the question about volunteers, will you provide a written reply? Well, on volunteers, we are recruiting our own volunteers and there will be a centralized training for all the volunteers. My expectation is that I hope all volunteers, regardless of their age, they would be energetic and they would be hospitable to all our visitors and guests. And we were going to launch the training soon. Dr. So Chuanhui. I'd like to follow up on CSTB two, nine, four. The West Kaolin Cultural District is a new cultural base in Hong Kong. However, there is a lack of transportation facilities as well as parking spaces. According to the government, there will be bus, buses number X two K and so on passing by the Cultural District. Has the government assessed whether these bus services are able to cater to the needs of passengers and visitors? And can the bus services help increase the footfall to the WKCD? Also, have you looked at the opening hours of the commercial premises on the WKCD? And do the opening hours tie in with the service hours of the buses? From the Austin Station to M Plus Museum, it takes you about thirty-five minutes on food. From Kaolin Station to the Hong Kong Palace Museum, it takes about eighteen minutes on food. Does the government have any plans to address the needs of visitors by introducing shuttle buses from the MTR Station to the West Kaolin Cultural District to enhance the role of the Cultural District? Secretary, please. Dr. So has been concerned about this question. This is not my first time responding to Dr. So's concerns about the transportation arrangement. To WKCD, we have mini bus routes as well as bus routes going to the WKCD. As far as I understand, we can address the needs now with the existing services. The Transport Department as well as our bureau would be happy to explore increasing transportation services if there is a need to do so. As to the operating hours of the commercial premises on, in the district, well, we'll look at whether there is a need for people to take public transportation. If it is expected that there will be a big crowd of people, for example, then we can implement special traffic arrangement. If not, there are parking spaces in the Cultural District. Like Dr. So said, from Austin Station to the Cultural District, you can go there on foot. You can also walk there from Kaolin Station. If there are difficulties for people to get there, we can talk to the Transport Department to see if we can introduce additional transportation services. So this is all depending on the needs. I also understand that there are coaches that send visitors to the Cultural District and there are coach parking spaces in the Cultural District. However, we have to be very prudent. We have to see whether the roads there can hold more vehicles. Dr. So asked for information about patronage of bus services. Well, we can provide that information. The information has all been made public and we will provide that to Dr. So.
Mr. Yan Man Yu, thank you, Chairman.
I have a number of questions about Kai Tech. After the commissioning of Kai Tech Sports Park, we have one mega event after another and the whole area is uh invigorated. In the past weekend, as I observed, despite not having any major activities, Kai Tech became a very busy district. But my question is, what can be done to bring visitors to mega events or to the cruise terminal to the neighboring districts such as Kowloon City or Leumun or Quuntong Waterfront Promenade? I understand that the administration is contemplating the idea of water taxi, but I wonder if there are more plans uh to bring impetus to Kai Tech as a district.
Secretary, thank you Chairman. I share the same view as Mister Yan. Um in Kai Tech, we have some shops. We also have a dining area, a Bayside Dining Area, which should draw crowds. And in fact, in the past, when the airport was in Kai Tech in Kowloon City, people would first go to a restaurant in Kai in Kowloon City before boarding a flight. In fact, in the previous weekends when Hong Kong Sevens were held or in fact, during this week when we have the Coldplay Concerts, um I have been talking to the district officer in Kowloon City to see whether um the businesses in Kowloon City have benefited from the from the uh visitors. The answer is in the affirmative. In fact, the businesses have gone up by ten to fifteen percent because of Hong Kong Sevens. And for the Coldplay Concerts, we have observed something different. There is now this new trend. Uh we have some small restaurants pubs in San Pukong and Tok Kua Wan seeing a boom in their business. They used to close quite early, but in when major events take place, we encourage them to close later in the night so as to serve more customers. As what Gomai Bay in Kai Tech, when no concert or event is being held, they receive more local residents. It's a vast open space and the people would bring their children or their pets to the area. Mister Yan also asked about other places such as Leumun and Quuntong. Well, these are farther away from Kai Tech Sports Park. But as I explained earlier, the landing facilities in Leumun will be completed within this year. And by then, we we should be able to operate a water taxi flying the area. So that means perhaps along what um along Kowloon East, we can have a number of stops with the top water taxis, say in Kai Tech, the Cruise Terminal as well as Leumun so as to um bring visitors to different areas. Well, it will take some time. Mister Tang Fei.
Uh thank you. I have a question following up on two two oh. As I understand, the government is promoting mega events so as to boost economic development and the question was on whether the government has any statistical analysis uh as well as um the expenditure, economic benefits. According to the reply, the government has not maintained such statistics. Still, I believe the expenditure items and income streams should be recorded because we need to find out exactly what benefits can be brought about by mega events and how many jobs were created, for example. Otherwise, it would be difficult to gauge the success of mega events. Against the current financial situation of the government, we need to be able to assess whether this is reasonable investment. Because in fact, for mega events, it's often government-led with the community's support. Well, for example, the Hong Kong Sevens is event run by a private party with the government's support. So my question is on data collection on government expenditure and income generated.
Secretary, thank you. Chairman, thank you, Mister Tang. Uh we have different types of mega events. Now, if government support comes from, say, the A M A C system or the Mega Arts and Cultural Events Fund, then we will have a better grasp of um the various income items such as box office and other streams of income because we require the operator of these mega events to submit reports to us. So that's easier. But there is still one challenge. Even if the government provides funding support through the funds I mentioned, it may be very difficult to quantify the benefits. For example, in April, we will hold a summit. This summit will comprise fourteen delegations from different places um in Asia. And this is the Asia Cultural Cooperation Forum plus twenty twenty five. Now, government colleagues will be involved. For example, the LCSD or other departments will be providing support to the um to this event. And it's very difficult to have a breakdown of the expenditure items. And it's very difficult to gauge how much spending or consumption spending will be generated by this forum. So, but the question is about government expenditure on each and every mega event. Then it's really hard to say. Uh we provide funding support. We also promote them in different ways. We have, they say, the Chinese New Year football club uh football um game this year. And it's an A M A C event. But we don't provide actual financial support to the event. We provide support in other ways such as coordination by the police and LCSD's management, et cetera. It's hard to quantify. Still, I will go back and mull over Mister Tang's point and see how we can keep um more detailed information about the income and expenditure details. I'd like to follow up on two seven seven about outsourcing lifeguards for swimming pools. There is a serious attrition of civil servant lifeguards and seasonal lifeguards. And as a result, even during peak seasons, some swimming pools have to be closed down. And this is a matter of the public's concern. In September last year, the LCSD began to outsource um the work of lifeguards in six swimming pools. According to the administration's reply, the total contract sum is approximately seventy-five million dollars. Dividing that by sixty-eight staff members for twenty-four months, that means um the uh each pose costs forty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. Now, for the midpoint notional salary value of the civil service lifeguards, it stands at twenty-three thousand six hundred and thirty. So that means outsourced lifeguards comes with a much greater cost and that's one point nine four times the salary for a civil service lifeguard. Even taking into account the um conditions of service benefits, gratuity, et cetera, I don't think that a civil servant would be as costly as an outsourced lifeguard. So in a coming recruitment exercise for seasonal civil service lifeguards, is it possible to increase the salary? My next question is about the five-day week in reply number two seven six. The LCSD has launched the Smart Play System and according to the reply, sixty-six staff members can now enjoy the five-day week arrangement. Still, I think that this is a small number because we have installed the three hundred and seventy-five kiosks uh for Smart Play in two hundred and forty venues. In the next phase, Smart Play's functions will be enhanced. People will be more familiar with the system. And I believe by then more manpower can be saved. So Secretary, in the coming one or two years, is it possible for the five-day week to cover more colleagues? Do you have a target as to how many more colleagues can enjoy a five-day work week in the coming two years? Secretary. Well, this is a rather specific question, so I'll give the floor to the Director of LCD uh LCS. Right, the first question is about the outsourcing of lifeguards. It's run on a pilot basis and with outsourced life-saving services for six swimming pools. This pilot will run for two years and upon the conclusion of the contracts, we will um review the situation. Indeed, in recent years, uh with a tight supply of lifeguards in the private market, we have run into difficulties in recruiting civil servants as well. That is why we've outsourced some of these jobs. But as I explained, for seasonal lifeguards, the salary stands at about twenty-three to twenty-four thousand dollars, a bit higher than the uh salary offers for civil servants. Well, it is hoped that during peak seasons, we'll be able to recruit sufficient seasonal lifeguards to serve the public. Now, we have a number of enhancement measures. For example, we work with the E R B. We um the E R B runs relevant training courses so as to attract new blood. The other enhancement measure is to enlist ethnic minority groups to organize relevant training courses so as to recruit more lifeguards. Now for five-day week, that's the second question. We need to go by the civil service regulations. For LCSD venues, most of these remain open on public holidays and weekends and their operating hours are indeed quite long from seven A A M to eleven P M. And we need to consider our manpower arrangements before confirming that F D W can be introduced. And we do encourage our colleagues to review the situation and if manpower arrangement can be made, then we welcome um the introduction of a five-day week for some of these departments. Of course, with the launch of Smart Place uh Smart Play System, we are able to save manpower and there will be flexibility and more room to introduce a uh five-day week. Mister Yim Kong, thank you Chairman. I'd like to follow up on CSTB two four oh. That's a question from me. Uh first of all, I thank the administration for giving me a reply. But I think two of my questions have not been answered. One of my suggestions is to distribute um consumption coupons to visitors who have spent a certain amount of money in Hong Kong. And the other suggestion is to revamp certain tourist attractions to make them into checking spots to attract more visitors. In fact, recently, the central government has rolled out a tax-free arrangement for visitors. Tax rebates will be offered um for visitors. I think that the same should be introduced in Hong Kong. According to the administration, this year they will continue to hold a special festival. Uh as I understand, every year for two consecutive years in these festivals, the Klansmen Associations from twenty-nine provinces have taken part in in them. And the food and the local produce, even the variety shows are very popular. My question is whether the government will talk to the relevant counterparts in other mainland cities so as to um so as to uh organize more such fairs in the future.
Secretary. On high-spending tourists, we are thinking of ways to attract more of them to come to Hong Kong. Are we going to distribute consumption vouchers to them depending on the amount they spend? Well, we don't have plans to do so. If we give them consumption vouchers, that amounts to the government inviting them to come to Hong Kong for free. So we will have to think about the advantages or benefits of doing so before we implement such arrangements. So of course, we will attract high-spending visitors to Hong Kong, but I have reservation about giving consumption vouchers to them. Well, we don't have any uh sales tax in Hong Kong, so we don't have the relevant uh tax-free arrangement. Since we don't impose such taxes, perhaps we cannot uh follow suit as in learning from the uh practices in the mainland to roll out a tax-free arrangement. Now on Temple Street, we tried to enhance Temple Street to improve the image of the area. The Tourism Board is continuing with such work, but as to how to make Temple Street more popular, we leave it to the shops there to promote the street. So uh as far as I understand, um Temple Street is still very famous among uh inbound visitors. Now on bazaars held by Klansmen Association, I have been to one held by the Shantou Klansmen Association. And there were performances there as well as sales of uh different gourmet. These bazaars have been very popular locally, but uh will visitors come to Hong Kong just for the bazaars? Well, I understand that Klansmen Associations will continue to promote the events they hold. And if they need support, the LCSD can offer help. Understand that there are larger-scale events such as uh Chao Cho uh Festival that is held in the Hong Kong C E C. So if there is a need to do so, we will help promote these events. Mister Benson, look, I'd like to ask about two oh six. I'd like to thank the Secretary for doing a lot of work in promoting tourism in the countryside. I understand that there are promotional videos produced by the Tourism Board. And the Secretary also uh helped promote a movie about our countryside and hiking trails. I think the next step for the government is to introduce more transport facilities. The Secretary just now mentioned about the East Dam in Saikong. Some uh visitors have to wait for a long time to travel back from the East Dam to the Saikong Town Center. I think we can restrict the number of vehicles during peak hours to go in and out of that area. But we can also introduce public transport services during peak hours to help uh divert crowds and visitors. This will help enhance our visitors' experience and shorten their waiting time for transport services. Also, I understand that the government has been promoting island tourism as well as as well as coastal tourism. This can help increase the number of attractions in Hong Kong. We have been trying to convert some remote areas in Hong Kong into popular tourist destinations. I think the government should therefore review the transportation arrangements around these areas to see if there is a room to enhance the services. Now, on publicity. Many people take photos when they visit our rural areas or countryside. However, they often leave rubbish there. So can the government step up publicity and encourage visitors to pick up their garbage so to keep our countryside clean? Secretary. I think um Mister Look made some very good suggestions. I think we should take back our own garbage. In Japan or other places in the world, there are many popular hiking trails, and we rarely see garbage bins there. This is because they encourage a culture of taking back their own garbage. And this is something that we want to learn from them. I think we have to all protect our countryside, so we do have to promote this message to our visitors, to cultivate this good culture. Now, on transport arrangement, as I replied to Mister Vincent Chang's question just now, I mentioned that I am also a very keen hiker. I have doubts about introducing transport services to the core parts of the countryside. For example, many people go to the East Dam on Machlo's Trail Section One, and many people like to take photos there because the scenery there is great. I know that some visitors like going to uh the second section of the Machlo's Trail, and they camp there. When you get to the kiosk, it is actually not difficult to go downhill, so you don't necessarily have to take transportation from Section One to the East Dam. If we introduce too many public transport services, it defeats the purpose of going hiking. Also, it may cause inconvenience to hikers. This is not something we want to see. So as we talk to the Tourism Commission as well as the Transport Department about the traffic arrangement, we take this into account. Now, on island tourism, apart from some developed outlying islands, we don't have many established landing facilities on our islands, so it's hard to introduce ferry services. However, we can think about relaxing restrictions so that more events can be held on ferries. Mister Chen Xiaohong, I'd like to follow up on my own question. Oh one three, according to the government, the Tourism Board will continue to make use of the existing strategies to introduce Muslim-friendly experience. And also, according to the government, as at this March, over a hundred and sixty restaurants have obtained the Halau-related accreditations. Is that a good number? Also, four brands in Hong Kong are supplying souvenirs for visitors. So how many restaurants are going to get the certification? Now, I would like to follow up on two two one about the Kai-Tech Sports Park. Every year, the Kai-Tech Sports Park have to hold sports events for forty days per annum, at least for the first five years after the opening of the Kai-Tech Sports Park, otherwise there will be a failure payment. Will there be a minimum requirement as well for the Kai-Tech Sports Park to stage entertainment events or concerts? Will you consider not imposing a fine so to encourage the Kai-Tech Sports Park to stage more entertainment events and concerts? Secretary. I'll first talk about the Kai-Tech Sports Park, and then I'll invite my colleague to talk about the Muslim-friendly experience. The K P I's are included in the contract with the operator, and this requirement was imposed some time ago as we prepared to launch the Kai-Tech Sports Park. We came up with the K P I's, and now we have a different idea about how many sports or entertainment events we should hold. I actually provided some statistics to you before. The Kai-Tech Sports Park, before accepting applications from organizers, they had already reached out to some two hundred organizers. And they managed to reach a deal with some organizers. The Kai-Tech Sports Park have been open for about a month now, and we've seen different events being staged in the venue such as the snooker game as well as the Hong Kong Sevens. So we've already seen some mega-events held in the venue, and we have just announced that two major football games will be held this summer, and the sports park, of course, the national games as well. As for concerts, a series of concerts will be held in the sports park, and there'll be more to come. So we are very confident that we'll be able to make full use of the Kai-Tech Sports Park. As to whether the K P I's listed out here will be met entirely, well, I think we need to adopt a wait-and-see approach. I don't think we necessarily have to meet all the K P I's that were set some time ago. If the operator fails to meet certain targets and we impose a fine immediately, this may not be the best practice. I'm sure uh members of this council will also help uh monitor the use of the venue with us. Now, uh I'll invite my colleague to talk about the Halau uh certification. We've been talking with the trade to see how we can introduce a better uh Muslim, uh more Muslim-friendly experience, and we've seen an increase in Muslim visitors in Hong Kong. However, people may not be very familiar with our Halau uh certification scheme. Through a consultant called Crescent Rating, we carried out a study on what needs to be done. We have seen an increase of the number of uh Halau-certified restaurants from a hundred and ten to a hundred and sixty, and we have to work with the relevant Muslim organizations in order to certify these restaurants because the certification covers the preparation of, for example, food, ingredients, and other types of services. I don't think we should only look at the number of certified restaurants. Instead, we can see that there is an improvement in terms of the quality of these restaurants uh within six months' time. A lot of two-star or three-star restaurants have been certified already. Also, there is the Ramadan Festival, and in Hong Kong, there will be two major banquet that are certified. It shows that uh we have the recognition of uh Muslim visitors. Also, earlier this year, there was a G N T I report. The report shows that we are ranked fourth around the world in terms of providing a Muslim-friendly experience, and we are ahead of Thailand, so we feel very encouraging.
Well, just a supplement about the Secretary's promise to review the optimization of the use of um Kai-Tech Sports Park. I appreciate her efforts uh as the facility will bring economic benefits to Hong Kong.
Next, Mister Chu Kokah. About oh seven five, opening up school facilities to promote sports development. According to the administration, over nine hundred and eighty schools are eligible under the scheme, but less than twenty-six percent of schools participated in the scheme this year. In fact, the success matching rate only amounted to sixteen percent for successful schools in the scheme. They would get a hundred and ninety thousand dollars as subsidy, and they can also apply for the David Tran, Sir David Tran Recreation Fund to upgrade their facilities. So in the past three years, only six schools received this grant. There isn't seem, uh there isn't seem to be a a very high incentive for these schools to join the scheme. Has the administration conducted any review? Has it to do with uh management and security? The second point is about increasing the amount of grants and extending the period. Would these measures boost uh the success rate? Will you invite the suc, um the participating schools to share the experience? My final question is this. Will the government consider opening up school facilities for other purposes such as arts and culture? School facilities can be used by, say, um the art troops or community organizations. The the schools can be rehearsal venues so as to um address the problem of lack of venues. Secretary. Now, to take the last question, we do promote the use of school facilities um for arts and cultural purposes. We haven't received response from schools uh on this point yet, but as for uh promotion of sports, I'll give the floor to the Sports Commissioner.
Thank you Chairman. This scheme has been in place for a number of years. We've received act, um positive response from schools. But there is a problem in terms of um available slots and eligible N S As. Schools will only open up facilities during non-class hours, but the, but the non-class hours may not be suitable for our N S As or other district organizations to run training courses. Say, these organizations may wish to run an eight-week badminton class, and the timing doesn't match. So that accounts for the low matching rate. According to our experience, we've tried to encourage schools to open up their facilities more often, and we have received feedback from schools. For example, schools are generally concerned about security arrangements. In recent years, we've relaxed the criteria for using the subsidies. Say, there may be a separate entrance, or there may be an additional gate to separate the outsiders from students. We'll continue to optimize the scheme and will evaluate the eh eh experience and strive to encourage more schools to open up the facilities. Chairman, I hope that the school facilities can be opened up for use by, say, uh drama groups or music groups so that they can conduct rehearsals once or twice a week. I think you've asked this question before. Secretary seems to be saying that they do keep an open mind. I just want to relay their request because musicians have to carry music, uh musical instruments around, and the storage is available in school premises. Next, Mister Stanley Ng.
Thank you Chairman. I'd like to follow up on a question asked by my fellow member from CSTB oh one six to oh one nine. They, these are questions from Miss Jovi Chan. The CSTB oversees three portfolios, including culture, sports, tourism. Culture includes art. To some extent, art is about ideology. These questions that I'm going to ask relate to arts and culture. We have the uh we have questions on Hong Kong Performing Arts Expo, the Film Development Fund Mega, um Arts and Cultural Events Fund, and also the Signature Performing Arts Program Scheme, et cetera. In terms of the dollar sign, we're talking about millions of dollars, and I'm not even going down to the integrity. And anyway, the government always emphasizes the promotion of the mainstream values characterized by patriotism and affection for our country and Hong Kong under the one-country-two-systems principle. That means art is not for art's sake, culture is not for culture's sake. So we have these various schemes. It's only dedicated unit within the government to make sure that these activities are also in line with the mainstream values I mentioned. I just want to know whether any government official is involved in the gatekeeping, as I mentioned, Secretary. Mister Ng made a very important point. It's about principles. We've set up the Chinese Culture Promotion Office, so we have dedicated teams to oversee these matters. In terms of the exhibitions and museums, as well as uh funding for film productions, we have a film development scheme for the mainland market to promote the traditional Chinese culture. We also have the Chinese Culture Festival. We work with different organizations including the uh Pro-China Cultural uh Culture Organization. This year marks the eightieth anniversary of the victory um of the War of Resistance, and we're going to take it very seriously. That means we'll work with the National Museum in our Museum of History. There'll be a new exhibition. There will also be a new exhibition in our um Museum of Coastal Defense and War of Resistance. We are going to work with the Guangdong Museum of Revolution. So we have dedicated teams to oversee these matters. On the matter of gatekeeping, Chairman, I must say that I am in charge of gatekeeping, and I give directions to my colleagues. Thank you, Mister Perry Yu. I have two que, um some follow-up questions on two five uh oh two five three, two five four, and I'll make the questions short according to the M P, M mark. And it's a question on airmark system. According to the administration's reply, they will review the airmark system as the government focuses on promoting sports and sports tourism. The government should also review the airmark system so as to encourage the tourism sector to collaborate with different parties to promote sports. Now, two other members also mentioned this traffic issue at Eastam of Jil Park, and I can't shun this issue. I think it's common knowledge that the Mackler House Trail is not a natural trail. It's supposed to be a service path for the WSD, and for years, no widening of the trail has been made, and it's not suitable for vehicular access. Now, despite these spectacular views, the trail hasn't attracted crowds over the years. It's rather disappointing. We should further promote the trail. This morning, I was asking about the PA improvement programs. At the moment, there is more to be desired. There are two peers being improved, but for the, for the other one, there is no timetable available. For this problem at the Eastam, we need the collaborative efforts of different departments, Transport Department, WSD, AFCD, and Tourism Commission. And I think that we should all put our heads together, and I should also be invited to conduct a field visit. Apart from vehicular access, we should also develop a route at sea. Secretary, I don't know whether you've been to Balapuan. It's a very nice waterfront. It's just two kilometers away from Eastam. It's an easy trail, even for beginners. You could go up to the Eastam very easily, just a forty-minute walk. But we need supporting facilities. It could be reached by boat. Now, for Kai Tech Sports Park, I've always made this suggestion from the first time I viewed this plan. There should be landing facilities of the Kai Tech Sports Park, and that's the dining cove. There should be landing facilities. I think Mr. Fong already undertook to conduct a review. Secretary, anything to supplement? Well, if Mr. Fong has undertaken to conduct a review, then of course, it is most ideal because we do need the departments collaborative effort. However, in fact, diver, to be exact, I am a rescue diver. Pak Lab One was the first spot where I started to practice diving. I could even see the singing ray. I spotted that fish. So that place has high ecological value. And as a rescue diver myself, I'm not supportive of the idea of building major landing facilities there because this will undermine the ecological value. Eastam is now a popular checking spot. But from the perspective of tourism spots or protection of the natural trail, I am concerned about this spot because if we are to allow two-way traffic, that means we will need to develop the place. But we, if we are to promote hiking trails in Hong Kong, we need to be mindful about protecting the nature. We need to be very careful, and that means we'll be working with the Tourism Commission, AFCD, and other, the TD and other stakeholders to resolve this traffic issue. But I'm afraid I cannot agree with Mr. Perry Yu that mass transport should be made available so as to make it a popular checking spot. Mackler House Trail, especially Section One, is a popular trail because it's very close to urban areas. It's just half an hour or an hour's journey for an urban dweller to be connected with nature. Now, on airmark events, in fact, both at the meetings of the Advisory Committee or the Strategic Group, I have suggested to the sector that there should be direct dialogues. Perhaps the organizers could work with the tourism sector to develop new tourism products. I need to extend the meeting by at least ten minutes. Secretary, please be brief. Right, simply put, the tourism industry should enhance communication with the operator of the Kai Tech Sports Park or the organizers to develop more tourism products.
Mr. Kenneth Fok. Well, I'm the last member to speak and, well, the, I'm happy that the sports sector can, can speak. I would like to follow up on oh six four and one seven five. It's about the sports subsidy scheme. I'd like to ask about the transparency of the scheme as well as the effectiveness of the scheme. Now, this scheme has been very helpful. It assesses the athlete's performance in a scientific manner, and it involves some three hundred million dollars, and it's been launched since 2022, and the fund comes from both the government and the Hong Kong Jockey Club. The scheme has been launched for some three years now. I believe it's been quite effective. However, there's been fragmented information about the scheme. The government spent a total of one hundred eighty-three million dollars approving some twenty-seven projects. Some of them include the one with the Hong Kong U S T and some about cycles to help athletes with disabilities. Well, this involves public money, and it's been launched for three years. So can we have a misstaged assessment or evaluation of the scheme? Understand that you may not want to disclose all the details of the scheme concerning the projects and so on, but as far as I understand, the scheme will only conclude in 2028, so it would be good to have an interim review. Now, we've been talking about the collaboration between the industry, the academia, as well as the research sector. Can we train up elite athletes? And can we build a industry with the elite athletes, Secretary? Well, Mr. Kenneth Fok is right. We do want to keep certain information confidential about the sports project, and we also want to train up more elite athletes. We have seen results yielded by the scheme. I remember one or two months ago, I went to the Hong Kong Sports Institute, and the institute showed me a collaboration project between the institute and the Hong Kong U. And the institute told me that I could take photos of the information, but I should not post the information to Facebook. So I understand that we have to be transparent, but at the same time, we have to handle the information we get prudently. Now, on building an industry, if we can make use of the results we get to build an industry, be it attracting athletes from other places or sports teams from other places to come to Hong Kong, of course, it would be great. We can also consider selling our technologies or R and D outcomes. If we can, I'll definitely encourage the sports institute to do so. Yes, sports commissioner. We had nine rounds of applications and twenty-seven projects are ongoing. Some of the projects have been concluded, and some of the outcomes have been applied to the competitions by the athletes, and we have seen results by making use of the R and D outcomes. We may not be able to disclose all the R and D outcomes, but we are seeing a few new projects underway now. For example, we will make use of big data that we collect from athletes, and we'll also make use of data from sports medicine to carry out studies. That's all I can tell you now.
Mr. Ma Feng Kwok, thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to speak. I'd like to follow up on CSTB one nine five and one nine three. There are my own questions. There is a drop of two percent in the subvention for major performing arts groups from the government. Last year, according to the Development Blueprint, the government will allocate resources, and it will encourage private donations. It looks like there won't be additional resources from the government. Instead, there is a drop. And how will the community be able to raise funds from the private sector? With the economic situation now, it's been hard for organizations to raise funds. So how can the government encourage donations from the private sector? So to offset the decrease in subvention for performing arts groups, will you consider rolling out, for example, tax concessions? Now, on the Film Development Fund, a lot of film projects have benefited from the fund, and we've seen that nine film projects got the funding, but only two films got profits. I support the government in providing funding to different film projects. However, is the government happy with the results? Should the government review the Film Development Fund? Should there be an assessment mechanism? Secretary?
Thank you. We promulgated the Development Blueprint, and we drafted the blueprint with the best intention, that is, to increase subventions for our performing arts group. Indeed, we haven't decreased the funding. We're happy to continue to offer financial support to projects that deserve the funding. As for performing arts groups, well, we have to abide by the principle of cutting government expenditure by two percent. And this is not only confined to performing arts groups. We see a cut of two percent expenditure across all government departments. As to whether we should roll out tax concessions, I've been talking to different members of the sector, and the feedback I got from them is quite positive. They are quite willing to offer help to the arts and culture industry in Hong Kong. So it really depends on whether the performing arts group can come up with some good programs that can draw donations and funding from the private sector. It is not up to the CSTB only on whether we can roll out a tax concession. And the tax in Hong Kong is quite low. It is at sixteen point five percent. And compared to other places in the world, we have a simple and low-tax regime. So there isn't much room for us to further reduce taxes. Now, on films, indeed, I have talked to my colleagues about that. We have funded a lot of film projects under the Film Development Fund. But as to what kind of film projects we should support and whether we get any recruitment, we really have to think about how we can make better use of the fund to ensure that film practitioners can make an earning and that their film projects can make yield returns so that investors from the sector will be willing to continue to invest in different film projects. And I will definitely continue to work with my colleagues on this. Thank you. This is the end of the meeting today. Tomorrow's meeting will start at nine A M. Thank you.